Sure. All right. Thank you, Ocho. We have a forum. Joan is in excused absence. Um, you can take notes.
Do me.
I know it's for your.
Sorry. Let me type my notes.
You start with the handprint.
It's a matter of fact, I can read it.
All right, and welcome, everyone. First of all, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We tried to put the flag up a little bit.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, the number team, has justice for all.
Any public comment?
Do you have a quest question?
Yes.
Uh, I'm David Bus for the record. Um, school supplies. Do you have any need for school supplies for, I want to call them, underprivileged kids or kids that may not be able to get all their school supplies? Any problem with that?
Uh, I, I believe that if donations are accepted, if they are accepted and the social workers work for families that might be in need.
What do I, where do I go?
Either of the offices could connect, he could drop it off, and you could connect with the, uh, they will pass it on to the social workers and thank you for that.
Oh, good. All right, Paul. Good.
Um, in, at, at least at the elementary school, students aren't given like a specific list of supplies that's been required to bring.
Right.
Almost every teacher asks for the same type of things, which are good pencils, glue sticks, things like, um, two pocket folders to send back and forth home with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, markers, colored pencils, that kind of thing, but we're, we don't actually get like a formal.
Right.
Supply list, so kids aren't required to bring in things, but every teacher has like classroom wish lists.
Right, but if they have, they'll, they, they'll have it. I need to come back over here, I'll come back over to the offices tomorrow and talk to somebody then.
Any kind of basic supplies that every teacher would be.
Tissues.
Tissues are actually, those are really permanent dry erase markers, Sharpies are a big thing because they're really an expensive supply. Um, Tyconderoga pencils are a teacher favorite, I know they're a little expensive, but kids spend way less time at the pencil sharpener over and over again.
Mm-hmm.
Um, tissues, um.
There's one I didn't think of.
Yeah, uh, it's on, almost, and glue sticks, glue sticks are a huge needs in this school, so.
Well, those are all easy to get, couldn't it?
They, yeah, and, you know, I mean, they're, like I said, we don't have like a formal school supply list, but those are teacher wish lists, all those types of things are on almost every teacher.
Okay, I'll stop by, I'll stop by tomorrow.
Ziploc bags are another big one, and, um.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, sure.
Um, all size Ziploc bags and paper bags, especially in the preschool and kindergarten classrooms, go through a lot of paper bags.
If I stop by, I can get an amount on those, the number that you make, you would need.
I think, I mean.
How many classrooms?
Uh, we have twenty, I, if you contact either.
That's what I thought.
Either of the secretaries would be able to either.
That's right.
Direct you or give you a better.
That's fine, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, um, I would request a motion for the approval of the July twenty-sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
May. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
And Mrs. Fields, you had a, a letter for communication in towards projects?
It's, um.
Did you work over there?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, the superintendent, Kennedy from, um, regional district eleven did want to extend an offer, he would be interested in having Brooklyn identify, um, district eleven as a school of choice. Um, one of the things that he identified in his, um, letter to us is that the curriculum rate would be less expensive than some of our other schools of choice and, um, provide, provide a pretty significant amount. He also did identify that he, although if we identified them as school of choice and required to try to provide transportation, they do have some vehicles that come, um, past Brooklyn and, you know, he would work in collaboration with us to, um, offer transportation. Um, he identified some of the quality programming that they have, um, even world languages, uh, some of the extracurricular activities that go on and, uh, it is an improved high school and it's a small high school, so that's one of the benefits that he identified, uh, if we were, you know, if there's particular students that are looking for that kind of scope, that is an option. We currently have, uh, one student that will be attending there just, uh, by uncharted choice, uh, but it's not then a school of choice in the past, so.
Is that the tuition rate we have for that one student?
Yes.
And what is?
Yeah.
Wonder how long they can offer that tuition rate.
Only get enough students to operate public school.
Yeah, because aren't they, I wrote, oh, every dollar, every dollar.
Every dollar that they, wouldn't have.
But aren't they over twenty thousand dollars per student as just their average cost?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I mean, I understand the need for bringing in a, in tuition, but I, I find it hard to believe they could continue on at seventy-five hundred dollars a student. I mean, I suppose some of those costs are fixed and it doesn't matter how many students you have.
Lots of costs are fixed, exactly, even Brooklyn's selection of students.
Right, without increasing costs, so.
Mr. Robert Henry?
I was just going to say, certainly help the school. Parents or students that might be interested in designing a new school, interning transportation course. And if some of them really want to contribute, they can take the benefit of the opportunity.
Yeah, there, when Al puts out to the schools one day, he's going to be doing the, I think, we do it in the open house and then, and then the students take, they can take their presentation. Always told people, this is what Woodstock does, this is what Killenly does, you know, if you want to, if you want to get attractive students, you probably have to be competitive.
And Mr. Henry would like to come to board and share a little bit about his school, so, um, if, if that's your, uh, desire, I can see if we can get him scheduled to come in, maybe in September. Um, if he is not suited to see that, uh, you know, through a board meeting, what can be offered.
The, okay, well, we don't really.
Well, yeah, we don't have that much influence over it, and it was always the sort of the, oh, you said you're better students here, you do this and you do that, we don't have any control over it all, we like to just, here are, here are your choices, students, which choose one that fits best.
Maybe we should have Al reach out for the open house on the sticks to see if they want to have a stable.
Yeah, I want to set the table, have some coming in, talking in our handouts or whatever. I think he did, I think we talked about this a while ago, um, I'm not sure if there are going to be here, but I will follow up with. Because ultimately, that's who's going to kill him now, is that fair? But as far as selecting a high school of choice, I don't think that's in our best interest, so, thank her. Or to guarantee that your information, um, to, you know, so. All right.
Would you let me see?
So you want to skip the board presentation, I know like Killenly and Woodstock have come before the board.
Is that something banking?
No.
Um, and, and everything, but it, it isn't, to me, i- i- it's okay, uh, unless, unless we're going to designate it as a school and considering designated school, I don't think it has much to do with it.
I, I would just be sure that they're aware of the open house and, and invited and, and.
And if they really want, I will, we don't want to say no, but just let them know that we don't have a lot of people, but we're not interested in this.
Great. Open house is there.
Yeah, opportunity.
Um, any other correspondence or, I guess? All right.
As far as the administrative reports, do you want to talk about your, your stuff? Um, so just a, a hiring update, um, we did hire a remedial reading teacher, uh, at the middle school, that's a position that, uh, basically has a one-year lead, uh, current position there in, um, the rights and media services. Um, the education research room, we did pull that position as of yesterday afternoon, maybe go into the literacy, um, teacher position too, so, uh, we just brought that person in. And then the positions on hold, that we agreed to at the last meeting remain on hold, so, uh, unbilled art of school psychologists, the math, the point five math interventionist in the twenty-hour week era art operation. There are just a few celebrations, I'm sure we hear many, but, um, Brooklyn Elementary School, the teen is not accreditation, uh, they had been walking on the process, they were already accredited and they got reaccredited, uh, that accreditation is good for five years, so that's a celebration. Um, I would like to have, um, potentially at future meetings, a, an opportunity for schools in the spotlight and great schools, some kind of, um, celebration to you each month, and so, um, I'd like to have Brooklyn Elementary School, um, Michelle, Michelle, come in and share that with you in September, that would. Great. Um, and just as an FYI, there is a Brooklyn Public Schools app, it is connected to our webpage, um, it's designed to make it easier for you to see the, the content on a cell phone or a mobile device. Uh, when you go to a traditional website from a phone, it's hard to read, you're always enlarging things, but the, um, web company has designed an app that aligns to, um, more of a phone device, so, um, you should free download that, it'll be a nice way for you to track, um, what's happening, so the calendar and your. And the lunch menu, so, uh, yeah, it's a nice show.
I think that'll always search you for on.
And you won't have to enlarge it on a little phone, you'll be able to read it, um, nicely, nicely, so, yeah, I think they're still ironing out a couple of glitches, uh, I think with the calendar, but it was rolled out in June, and so, um, very little activity over the summer, but I anticipate that it's going to be exposed and. Um, and I just list some important dates, uh, today, this morning, we had the new teacher orientation, uh, it's the first time, uh, that people can remember having a new teacher orientation, they, uh, all of our new teachers that have been hired did attend that, except for one that was traveling back to the state, couldn't be here. Um, it was, it was a wonderful morning, uh, we talked about some of the jitters of new teachers and some of the jitters of parents and students and, um, you know, being part of this amazing Brooklyn Public Schools team and the support that they get, we, we talked about a lot of the different things that new teachers don't realize until they're in the job, so. It was really a nice opportunity for them to get to know each other and for administration to get to know, um, teachers in both schools, so all of our administrators here, all of the new teachers, uh, Mr. Jeff Kelleher came and spoke a little bit about the ability to access different technology platforms that we use in the district. And, um, the DPA president, Kristen Schwell.
Schetzel.
She actually, I forgot her name. Oh, Schetzel.
I said that very soon.
Thank you, thank you, uh, was here too, to welcome, she's the union president, so she was able to come and, and meet the new teachers and welcome them in a really informal, actual way, so, those are really, I think, a great opportunity and it's a plus for them.
Can you go through the list of all the new teachers?
I, um, would love to, but I, um, I don't have a, as soon as I said that, I said, uh, I had intended to bring that list to you, um, I apologize, I guess, I can't do that. Uh, this evening, over at the Brooklyn Middle School, there was a fifth grade orientation, very well attended, I think, uh, lasted for about an hour, the two principal or the principal and the sister principal gave an overview and answered some questions, and again, the teachers, the, the amazing teachers come in in the summer and, and they're here for that hour and opening up their classrooms and inviting students in, so. It really is, it shows the dedication that teachers have to, um, helping, at fifth grade is a big transition year for kids, um, Miss Yanku did acknowledge that we've never lost any kids in lockers, because that's a big fear, opening the lockers, and so, you know, it's, it's exciting for them, it's exciting for the kids and their parents, so, um, it was a very good turnout. Um, quickly, the, uh, the Brooklyn administrators and the PTO will be running a booth at the Brooklyn Fair, so we will be there all, the whole four days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, we'll be sharing some information, some calendars, um, trying to answer questions that might come up, um, and, uh, the PTO has organized some spiritware for sale that day, and you, you have to take orders if you don't have your size or the, or the right length for you, so. Um, we're just looking forward to getting to see parents and children and in a casual, again, nice, uh, atmosphere in our community, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us, um, I'm looking forward to getting out and, and meeting some more of the public that I haven't met yet. Conversation is our, um, it's August twenty-eighth, that's Monday, and it's our welcome back time, um, we bring the entire staff in, we're going to start, uh, the conversation, uh, just with coffee and something nice to eat, and then, um, uh, we'll, we'll get started right at eight-thirty in the morning. The focus of that day is to recognize, um, some of our veteran staff, some highlights of the year, um, the academic year, what we just finished, and set some goals for, and articulate the goals for where we're headed, um, for this coming year, so, uh, we have a few exciting things in the works for, for that morning, it's a ninety-minute time where the entire staff comes together, it's really the only time that we're able to bring all of this staff together, because other than that, they're working in a building, so. Um, we'll introduce new staff, I'm really excited about that as well.
Is that at the middle school?
It is at the middle school in the auditorium, and so, um, uh, the board members, I would invite you to come with you, are able to, it's really a, you know, we'll start at eight, the, the coffee is at eight, and we'll start the, um, conversation at eight-thirty, it'll be down by ten. Uh, then staff will go off to trainings and a variety of other things. Uh, hopefully, everybody knows the first day of school is August thirtieth, uh, except for preschool, they start on the very first, and, um, then we do have Labor Day coming, which is a day off, and then open house, we have two open houses, Brooklyn Middle School open house, which is also the high school, school choice fair, is September sixth, and on September seventh, uh, at five-thirty, the PTO hosts a barbecue, and then, uh, Brooklyn Elementary School has their open house media with on that, so, I understand that's a big event.
Yes.
Um, and I think we have volunteer firemen that come and.
They come, you know, and the Boy Scouts serve.
It's awesome.
And hopefully, some other board members will be there too, last year, I think. Do you know one?
No, I, I.
You were. I think Jones here.
So, again, it's, it just shows, I think, a nice example of what this community is about, um, really bringing people together and, and the volunteers, you know, the Samarites, all the Lions Club working with the Park and Rock, and to hear that the Boy Scouts and the fire department are, are supporting the school, it's really nice to see.
Everybody's.
And then our next board meeting will be the twenty-seventh, so I tried to put some of the highlights on before we move on.
All right, so, creative reports, um, where Joan is working on policy and, um, I think our, our next small packager is starting to be worked out, it's, we're, we're done with the massive, um, recall, uh, so now it's just kind of doing the regular maintenance, that needs to be done, and, um, working on, and doing, uh, my eyes. The budget is, is kind of in his hands still, so, uh, the governor decides something or Phil Jeff decides something for us now.
So you probably all are aware that the Democratic Party, you know, its preliminary portion of this preliminary going to play a, um, to standing behind the increase in the sales tax due. Six point eight five percent, so greater than it is now, and, um, the impact of that on the schools is, uh, very significant in comparison to the cuts that the governor would make if he had to follow his administrative budget. I don't have the numbers in my head exactly, but it makes, but the reduction in the school budget is seventy-nine thousand dollars or something like that, well, which is not, not great, but not impossible.
Two point nine million.
Well.
There's a, there's a freedom.
On the other hand, the Democrats and their announcement today did not comment on who they, um, are going to require the towns to pay a portion of the teacher's retirement, or, I mean, they just didn't comment on it. Nothing to celebrate with its mind, but all in all, that approach would make it easier, the impact on the town budget is just about the same, so, the towns of all, um, it still is going to be a tough budget to make, and the comments that were made in the public announcement, um, the suggestion that next year will be even worse, and the party's going to be going to present with phenomenally worse, um, according to the governor, but he'll be gone by then, so.
He doesn't really care anymore.
Uh, one more question.
Yeah, my question is, so, I guess the question becomes, is it likely to have a budget in place before October one, when we get that first twenty-five percent cut, like six hundred and seventy-nine thousand or thereabouts?
Well.
I mean, is that something we should even start talking about yet?
I think you should be talking about it, because the governor has threatened, if there is not a budget in place, he won't, he won't, he won't reduce that twenty-five percent either, so. Uh, we, we run the risk that the governor means what he says, and I think most people believe that his policies are primarily getting the legislature to act.
Moving, what?
Um. You're through on the grant. And, um, have we, and, um, we, we, I think they will have to, we have to borrow money to keep operating until the, uh, budget is adopted. It's tough on every town in the state, and, um, I think it's tough enough so that all parties will, um, take action sometime during September.
Because looking at, I mean, not that our numbers aren't horrific, like looking at some of the other numbers for the towns in just eastern Connecticut, and they're crippling, as far as, well, I mean, I don't see how any town can survive and, and even function on a minimal basis on, on some of the numbers that we're looking back in.
That the governor will.
That the governor was close to just.
Oh, that's, that's. And, of course, the situation is one in which there's not so much sympathy for the plight of the towns in eastern Connecticut, from the wealthier towns west in Connecticut, which are getting zero dollars. Eighty towns in Connecticut get no education cost anymore, so.
I guess for me, when I was reading, as I've been reading everything, the, just the part that stuck out the most is October one is a little over a month away, and that's six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in the education cost sharing grant, I mean, would be huge if we had to find six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So I guess that's my question, is that the money that we even think about now, or do we wait until September twenty-seventh?
But the problem is, how do we make a decision, and I think that's, like, I think it's a decision that you have to make, but a discussion we have.
I, I think you should think about it, I don't think you should take action, I think you should make concrete plans as to what you want to do, frankly, if we get no money from the state on October first, we, we will borrow money.
Well, my understanding was, we would get some money.
We'll just have to borrow one.
We would get six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars less in that first payment, unless I misread it.
No, no, you didn't misread.
We would get a payment, but it would be six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and the understanding being that that would not be made up, I mean, that would just be a, a straight law.
Twenty-nine, I believe.
Right, over the, yes, but it's twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, right, so, I, for me, as a personal parent, taxpayer, resident in Brooklyn, I don't want to get to September twenty-seventh, there's no budget in place, and then not even have the slightest clue what we might do.
Will we, will we catch back to the town and increase taxes?
Uh, yes, I mean, there are, there are so many possibilities to talk about, I'm slightly saying, I think you ought to give it some thought. Extreme cases, that the legislature hasn't enacted, and the governor enacts his, um, acts under stress, uh, in that case, which perhaps you could rethink a little, we, we could get two point nine million dollars less, and it would require a very severe, um, restructuring if the way the schools are operated. Significantly higher average pupil count in each class, um, a reexamination of those employees who are not directly involved with the services of students, and so forth, um. That wouldn't happen October first, even if the governor doesn't, you know, come through on his threats, I think the board finances would be asking the schools to give very quickly a plan for how they would operate, uh, with lower income, and we've definitely found the same thing, and we're going to be getting ready to ask the taxpayers to approve some, teach, uh, funding that would allow us to operate on, um, reduced scale for multivision and plan. But we couldn't have to terminate teachers on October first, and we would borrow enough money to maintain a positive cash flow while we give, for education, for town government, and the taxpayers enough time to contemplate the situation and decide how they want to move forward. I guess the same thing is true with the legislature, enact a budget which is, um, much less severe than the governor contemplates, but is, uh, provides less money to us than we anticipated, and I think the problem would be smaller, but I think the steps would be the same.
I think at this point in time, Mrs. Fields could be working with the administrators of these buildings and really evaluating where spending is occurring at this point in time on a very conservative basis, and, you know, have each of the buildings start to evaluate, if drastic measures even taken, they have kind of a, a list going as well of things that, that have come down, and I think that's, but unfortunately, I don't, and we can talk all we want to, but until there's an actual line in the sand, we have no idea of a planning for two point nine million or five million or one million.
I understand that, but what I, I guess what I was getting at is that if we get to that October one payment of the ECS grant, which is twenty-five percent of our total, we, my understanding is that if we get to October first and our payment is the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars less than what was anticipated, that will never be made up, even if a budget passes, like that we would have that as a deficit already, no?
If you don't know that.
We don't know that.
Um, unless the legislature, um, adopts a budget that reinforces the governor's proposal, that's the only way that what you suggested would come to pass, I, I rather suspect that it's possible that the legislature may be still mucking around with what the budget ought to be, and October first will come, and the governor might say, you're taking too long, I'm enacting my, uh, my proposal. If that were to be the case, my belief is that Brooklyn will borrow enough money to make up a portion of the shortfall, now so that we can operate until the legislature passes the budget, we can't imagine the legislature not passing some kind of budget beyond, say, the end of October.
Now, if they, so if our check, if our cost sharing grant comes in low, let's just say we pass that October first date, they pass the budget sometime in October, and they set the actual figure, is it potentially, so you're saying that they could potentially make up the shortfall, or a portion of the shortfall, or whatever, in like the next payment, the next twenty-five seconds?
Whatever they decide they want to do, either a portion of the shortfall or all of the shortfall, my guess is that even the most, um, supportive, uh, budget. My guess is that even the most supportive legislators, legislators most supportive of public education, here for a month or six weeks have passed by, they would probably not be looking to make every school miss a call going back to the start of school.
All right, so maybe, all right, that's kind of what, how I read as I'm reading all of the information, that if, if we get to that point and we have received a check, that sure, chances are it's going to remain at least a portion of that shortage. And that's what we would be looking at cutting from our budget. So I think that's.
Wait till tomorrow, the governor expressed an extreme displeasure that we got Democrats' proposal today, so I guess it's.
More than.
Or something else announced tomorrow.
I think as long as, as Mrs. Fields and the administrators are looking at everything. We just don't spend a lot of money. I mean, we don't. I, I understand that, but in the sense of, of starting to make a list of like, if a line is drawn in the sand, are we doing A or B? Like ultimately, I mean, it is so drastic what that difference, what that number could be. And I think that the governor is just really trying to make it a scary proposition so that the legislature gets their.
I think it's a scary, scary kind of situation.
And I think you're right, but I think he's trying to, to create some fear and uprising that's making a decision so we can get, so we can get going for it. So hopefully that is enough to motivate to get some sort of improvement in.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with that. I don't think it's going to be two point eight billion dollars, but if it's six hundred thousand dollars, and ultimately, that's, that's a lot of money out of our budget. It's just, I think it's something that should be seriously contemplated.
We're doing, we're keeping our, our hires on hold. We've done, we've made over the move, so I don't know, are you proposing we do something else?
No, I just, I think it's a conversation that needs to be had. That's, I mean, that's for me, as a parent, which is what I am first and foremost. As a parent, I, I would like to know that, that we are thinking about what, what could possibly be done. You know, and I don't, I don't, I don't, there is no way to know exactly what that number is, except that we know it's going to be something. It is going to be something. And I just, I feel like waiting until September twenty-seventh to have that conversation is waiting too long to not even just contemplate what we could possibly do. And I, I understand, you know, not spending where we don't, but we don't really spend, you know?
We don't have that much.
Spending money as far as.
That's not always.
Yes.
Well, I think, I think if something comes out, right? I mean, if something comes out between now and September twenty-seventh, we would obviously schedule it better.
Me neither.
We can still, we can see at this point if it's, if we need to.
And ultimately, I, I think it's, it's up to Mrs. Fields and the administrators of the actual buildings to be really looking hard and fast of, of how things are operating in their specific locations to say, okay, this, like if, if A line is, and whatever that line conceived it is, is drawn, this is the list that we're working on. I don't feel that.
It's ultimately us that have to set the budget. I just think it's a conversation for somebody.
For everybody to be examining.
Yeah, and I think.
And that's the imagination, being thinking that way, then we'll listen to the recommendations.
I, I'd like that. I mean, I think it's useful to think that the plan is made. But the biggest control of expense that the board of education has is salaries. And I think we want to be very careful about making all the governance as possible in changing the working conditions here, that's a factual item for renegotiation. And I just don't think it's the kind of thing that ought to be discussed in public until the plan is made. So I think everybody can think about what might happen, but no, two of you ought to get together and talk about it.
I just would comment that we certainly, as administrative team, have had multiple conversations about this. I, I have spoken to the president about it as well. And, you know, so it's, it's certainly in the forefront of all of our thoughts. And as you all articulated currently, the projected or the executive order is not pretty on how to page it. So it would be very drastic if we had to make the cuts as proposed in our executive order. So we're just, we're really aware of that and are thinking about what that would look like and it's.
And I would say that, you know, the administration team, to have their conversations, but and just know that we, as a board, will, we can be, let something is, is more permanently decided versus threatened. Right, as far as part of the initiative to other committees, I have been off the hook because Mr. Otten is giving me a vacation for the summer. And unfortunately, in lack of budget, the board of finance is happy to meet because there's not a whole bunch to talk about until something is decided for us. Anything from the board at all?
We had our annual meeting last night. Amy wants to see the annual report. I just basically went over enrollments, information, went through the annual report. They're on track with budget, keeping an eye on, you know, what's going on with the towns. I mean, no, I don't, I don't think they're ready to reduce situations, but, but they, I mean, I don't think they're going to need your support.
Seventy-five hundred dollars to send them to parish.
And, you know, they have homecoming weekend coming up and the opening, the, well, brand opening itself can't rise coming up, so all that stuff next month.
Any other leaders on the board? Nope. Mrs. Fields, did you want to talk about the roof?
Sure. The, the group companies are here and working diligently. I know that Mr. Tuscia has continued to have regular conversations and checking every day on, on status. I do think Joe, you are the last group committee meeting? I'm sorry, were you at the last group committee meeting? Yeah.
I voted to put some new pieces or something so that they can put the roof on the gym.
That's a tech, tech.
Well, protection is dishing or something, so.
So, so the group committee does meet regularly and they, they're reporting, you know, they're reporting on their progress. Neither of the schools will be completed by the opening, but it will not impact our opening. The, they'll be working, I think, even this weekend, Monday and Tuesday. They'll be really working diligently on the roof at the middle school. One of the things that they do is move the hot tar over there to finish off with the stone. And so they're hopeful that between this weekend and Monday and Tuesday that we have finished that part. So the odor factor would decrease. So if, if they don't finish, they would have to finish it on the weekend when school's not in session because of safety concerns.
I thought the long weekend.
And what about, one of the updates had talked about moving the third and fourth grade classrooms while they were doing that roof for like a day and a half or?
So what we're, what is happening in this building is they will be installing another roof. And, and so there will be some noise to the classrooms. So you were under it today?
Yeah, they were working on the gym and just walking in the hallway by the gym is really loud.
So they thought they would have, it would not, they would not be over a classroom for more than a day or a half.
Oh, is that what it was, a day and a half?
A day or a day and a half that they would be impacting that area under them.
So would they just move?
They'll just keep moving on. So one of the, so what's happening over the gym is different than what they're going to be doing over the classrooms. So right now, it's doing.
That's the fifty thousand dollar trip.
Right. I mentioned that there is some metal racing being installed. So that's a different sound than what you're going to hear over when they actually put the metal in the roof, like that metal, yeah, roof on, that will not be as loud. And so we do hope that that's going to, it's, it's not going to be sound free, but hopefully it's not going to be too loud. So we'll know as soon as we start that part, which is different than what it is right now in the gym. But it seems to be moving along. If you, when you leave this building, if you look at the main entrance area, you'll see a blue trim starting to appear around the building, so that's the color of the roof. So it's, it's going to come along pretty quickly. Currently, you can see that the driveway is blocked off for the middle school. And to get behind this building from that end, that will be cleared by, by the first student drop-off day. The material that is stored currently in the parking area for the elementary school will be stored on top of the roof by the time school comes. So I, you know, I think we, they're very cooperative. They're very open to listening to our suggestions, our, our concerns, and they're very responsive to that.
My boys thought it was fantastic that there was a porn party on the roof today.
There you go.
Just saying, they kept going back to the window at the stairs where you can see onto the roof to see if they could see anybody going in there because they thought that was fabulous, that they didn't have to walk or get off the roof to go.
Yep.
I think that's one of the things that is going to be important is that when they are on the roof, they're just going to be on the roof. They're not going to be up and down.
Oh, no, they can't, I said that.
They have to get down all the time they have to.
They're going to get all the materials up and down.
Try to impact those people as they come. They should have, they've done it many other times.
I was going to say, well, actually, when you're, you can't see anybody outside. You know, you just, there are places where you can see onto the windows and you can see them walking around up there. But yeah, they just thought that was great.
So. Yeah. So it did include a small portion of our data from the S-BAC. Just for your kind of initial overview, I do, we'll be inviting the two principals to our September meeting to go deeper in the analysis of the data and to talk about what the plan is for moving this year, moving forward to address the data. So I'll just walk you through what this packet shows you. There are three boxes that were created. The first one is ELA slash literacy, so that's the, you know, English language arts area. Then the second box is mathematics. And then finally, it shows the number of students tested. So like you say, if that percentage goes up or down, does it, how much does it get impacted by the number of students that are taking the test? So year after year, so that a year-over-year comparison. And then if you look at the, the ELA, I've got it set up by grades, so grade three. So you can see the trend, two ways to analyze this. So you can look at third grade, the current year in the sixteen seventeen, what the percentage of students that earned at a level three or higher. So there's four levels, and so a level three or higher. And you can see that percentage there. Some of these percentages are not ones that we're overly happy about. We're, and the principals are looking at things and wanting to, they'll be developing plans to address this. So when you look at grade three, you could also look at grade three over time as the same, as a cohort of students. So grade three in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen are the fourth graders of fifteen, sixteen, and they're the fifth graders of sixteen, seventeen. So I, I've got three years' worth of data on there to show you a little bit of the trends. You could look at third grade year-over-year or the cohort of students as they move from grade to grade. Just some, just some quick things I did note that the administrators will be presenting this data a little more deeply for your review and identifying what they're going to work on from here. Teachers will be using some of this data as they develop their own goals of what they're going to be working on in classrooms. And they use this information to guide their instruction. So if their, their analysis of a certain portion of the, let's say, mathematics assessment, they're reporting claims, and that's what you see, mathematics are reported claims. And so when you break this data down further, you can see, for example, plane one has a higher number of questions, has a higher weight, and it, it impacts kind of follows through into planes two and three and four. So if last year was a particular grade that was working on plane one, started to see some growth in plane one. So teachers are looking at what are the high leverage instructional pieces that they can focus on in order to make the biggest gains for their students, as well as just an overall growth in preparation. I, I was at the fifth grade orientation and Mr. Yan, who did articulate that this is one snapshot, it's one piece of information, it's an important piece of information for comparison sake from our district year-over-year, but also from our district compared to other districts. And that will be part of the presentation when we, when we're meeting in September.
And how far do we have to drop to become school key so we can get our money in?
We don't want to go into that.
Interesting to see what the, what's we have to say.
Uh, no, certainly we're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And the budget for sixteen seventeen?
So this is, the final time we'll be talking about the sixteen seventeen school year budget. We did close out the books for the sixteen seventeen school year. And there is a deficit amount as we anticipated that would be adjusted. That amount is sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. So the board had already agreed that we would submit a letter to the board of finance. And so that will be coming over. I just wanted to know what the number was and not going to come over to the board for their discussion for next month.
The P E T budget?
So this is again, a look at where we are so far in the year. Some of, some of the expenses we encumber for the year. So for example, salaries, we encumber those dollars. We know we're going to be paying for a salary all year, so we can encumber those funds. We will try to encumber as many funds, which means just that we put it in reserve in our budget. We've counted it as it's going to, it's definitely going to be spent as opposed to some of the other line items that may, are in there, but have not been accounted for specifically yet. So I would just kind of in a big picture, point out that there are three line items right at the, on the first page that are in the negative. In the parentheses, those are negative balances, budget balances. The reason for that is that some of these staff are grant-funded positions. So we've encumbered and as we receive either one grant, IDA grants, that money will be put back into that line item. So we have to receive that first and then balance that. A couple of things that I would point out, so it looks as though we have the budget balance is a seven million dollar balance right at the moment. That sounds really big, and it is, but just to articulate, there is still six million dollars worth of transportation and tuition costs that have not been encumbered. So we continue to work with the transportation company and review the expenses as well as calculating the tuition cost, which is a moving target for students that are both in high school tuition placements, because those numbers keep changing, and out of the district's special education tuition cost. So kind of lumped together, that's, that's money that we'll be encumbered. And then sort of a lesser amount that will, it's not just sitting there, not going to be spent, but I just want to articulate that there are almost seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand still of fuel and gas and substitutes, FICA, Medicare, pension costs, which will get spent. It's, you know, it's still a pretty big chunk. So if we were to today encumber all the dollars for those that we have budgeted, we're, we're still. we're, we're still, we still have about, almost a little under four hundred thousand dollars that's not been encumbered or spent to date. Does that make sense?
I'd just like to comment.
Yep.
Encumbrances are useful, useful tools to look at a budget in a static situation. If there's any re-budgeting that goes on, the encumbrances for the items that are re-budgeted need to change and perhaps or impact some other lines. Like, encourage for them is to look at the initial budget amount and the spending to date, as well as the encumbrance. I think encumbrance, especially in a dynamic situation, can lead you to improper
Well, I was gonna ask that question, is that, because last year was the first year we were given encumbrances, the transportation over them didn't show up until because they did not encumber the money? Because it was never, sorry, so no one was tracking them, and your to-date spending was still not showing that we were gonna have that this time? I don't, I don't know what happened, I'm just wondering if that's happened.
I think part of it was that it wasn't being encumbered. So at this point, I continue to have regular conversations with the bus company and are, I'm already projecting out how many buses are in, are running every day. So their transportation, for example, is, is a, is a unique situation, because if we have, our count right now is there are eighteen buses that are, there are eighteen buses that are running in our town every day. And so if you, if you were to take a logical number, eighteen buses times their daily rate for a hundred and eighty days, you know what, what are the costs for the buses? However, when any one of our schools has a shortened day, that's an extra cost. And so part of the budgeting, which I think wasn't discovered until a little further into the year, was that, you know, if, let's just say, Killen, we have an early release day, or Woodstock Academy has exams, we now need to send the buses out for an additional cost to make a midday run. Because that's what the time
I, I still do not understand that, because my understanding was that Woodstock buses took Woodstock kids home, and Killen buses took Killen kids home. So when that bus driver went to the academy at noon or two, I don't see the difference.
Is that in that?
Will you get a good answer on that one?
It's in the contract. I mean, it says any midday, you know, like off, off runs.
That's not an off run, I don't, I don't
That requires a bus. I'm not defending the bus company. If all the seven day, four in the half, send a bus to Woodstock.
Okay.
So I, I understand that
So if it's a bus driver issue, it's fifty bucks for the two hours.
Why does it, because that's not the language in the contract?
So, so we pay the daily rate, we would pay the daily rate, and then we pay an hourly rate on top of that, you know, to send buses out at unscheduled times. And so
The two hours of the, I suppose they could have a layover time before they go to the middle school or different.
Right. So, so that's it. So the, so the tier one is their morning run route, so they're
But it couldn't have been that, how, how much of a line item was that?
So we continue to, I still am, am doing some of the invoices that we received and some of the drilling, the office staff here.
We weren't supposed to spend a day.
Initially by the day, yes. And then there are additional fees for times that it's additional runs that makes beyond that.
It's not an additional, it's just beyond
And so there are also fees for after-school activities. So when we thought that it was a daily rate, and then there's a bus that has to go to soccer game or basketball game, who brought us paying for that, we're on top of that, even more theory we paid already for a day.
No, I, I knew that. We, we negotiated that, and that was a special line item for, like, that's what I'm doing. So we were aware of that. So that's a thing.
So we're still working on it. I think the additional runs in the middle of the day, where they have to bring staff in to pick up midday students, that's, that's, those are additional hourly rates, so that's not part of the daily rate. So there, and so then there are weekends that are running. And so we have decreased, I think, we've consolidated some runs through a lot, a lot of hours, recurring runs, and, and we're not done. Which is, which is still something that we're working on even today. Still trying to clarify some of the runs. There are four of us on a conference call today for an hour, talking about runs and tweaking, and moving students, doubling this and moving that. And so we continue to do that in order to realize kind of a, that, that's cost savings. So one of the things that I would say is, my initial conversation with the company, we talked about three things. One is safety, one is efficiency, and one is potential cost savings. So safety is our primary concern. We need to make sure students are here safe, can get to school safely, are not switching buses in an unsafe manner, as was happening at some point. We have clarified or repeated those pieces with our routes that we're in place right now. There are some efficiencies that were achieved in that our students were frequently running late, or the buses were late picking them up last year. And so we've achieved greater efficiency for routes and students arriving on to school on time, and being picked up on time. So I think that's an improvement. The cost savings or the efficiency in cost savings, we're still working on. And so the initial routes, we didn't go to see cost savings, the second round, we didn't see cost savings. And after a third round, I'm beginning to see some possibilities for costing. So so it's, it's not, it's not as easy as I'd like to think it is. And, and I, I do give them credit, they're, they are continuing to adjust based on some potential cost savings that we might be able to find. But it's getting late, and there are still students that are missing off bus runs, so they're still working on that. We're working on trying to figure out where the students are and where they need to be. And our midday preschool runs are not complete yet, I mean, they've not been able to publish the midday preschool runs. I realize that causes anxiety, where I have some potential runs, they sent me at about four o'clock, and I initially glanced at those. They're close, but I don't see that they're, they're finished. They're not, they're not necessarily ready for public student college. So that causes me concern as a company. They, they too are disappointed with the routing software that they use.
Since I knew they were supposed to have some
They do have routing software, it's pretty lousy, I think. The, the output that we're getting is pretty lousy, and
That happened last year for sure. We would opt for, there was so much conversation.
So, so we continue to work on it. I think my conversation today about the routing software was that they feel as though once the dust settles, and, and, you know, for the first few days, I do anticipate some difficulties. We do encourage parents, please call our offices, either the central office or the trans-school offices, so that we can know what the problems are and we can address those problems. I, I don't necessarily want those phone calls going to the bus company, because I need to know what they
And that, that's what's gonna take a little bit of re-education, because in the past, they were totally
And the bus company actually volunteered to have them call them, and I said, okay. So, so I, I understand that it's still causing some stress and some anxiety over the latest of these. Preschool parents do come in for orientation on the thirtieth. I'd still have done before then, but I know we can address some of the questions and fine-tune. I understand that there, you know, you need to make arrangements for your children to be picked up and, or created by the bus, so we are continuing to work on that.
Can you clarify the shortage in the special ed? Is that something that we weren't? I mean, I know special ed is a moving target all the time. That seems to be a big number before we even start school.
So that's special ed in-state L E A, so
Is that a grant item too?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. What, what that means is that that's the cost for some of our specialist students that are attending other local establishments, yeah. And so my guess is that that's new students that have come in.
That's where we went short last year, was the big change in special ed. And I know that there's no way it predicted. I, I just was wondering if that was something that was new, unexpected, I don't know?
I do have a tentative list from, well, I do have up-to-date list that I did receive from, from our director of public services. And we're gonna continue to work and monitor that. So we've already talked about some of these things. I think she developed the budget last year, in probably November, December, and never adjusted after that. And we did have students that even arrived after the budget was created in the end of last year that were not accounted for for this year. So even, so some of the students that might have come in between January and June are still our students, we kind of know them well, but they were in the budget before. So, and that can go either way. And we can have students leave, and it can fluctuate dramatically one way or the other. But we are, I can assure you that we're monitoring this. And so I have a student-by-student list that we're tracking, the daily rate, the, and the additional expenses that are incurred for services that they might need. So I, I would be continuing to monitor that. Food services audit. So this is just an informational piece. The, our food services director, Tanyie Pats, was notified that she, this district will be audited this year. I wanted to just make you aware of it. I think there could be some potential implications down the road, maybe some consideration around policies that we have. One of, one of the ones that I'm anticipating is that in the next school year, not necessarily related to this audit, but in the next school year, if a student has a negative balance in their account, that we can't carry that negative balance over from one year to another. And so we need to talk about how we might handle that, but all schools will.
Anything that we let them carry over a negative balance anyways?
We try to block this.
So it's usually like, if you have a negative balance, you will get your report card, you know, that type of a letter usually comes home.
I believe that that had been the practice for a while. It's really not a kind of appropriate practice, and we won't be doing that. But we will, and, and the food services does a good job of trying to track down any funds that are due, and then the office will help. But we'll see if we can try to formalize that a little bit and articulate how we might do that.
And the key project?
So we did go out to, we created an RFP, went out, published the RFP, the, we got zero bids on the project. So
I'm excited.
No. We did have a company that worked with us to help us to create an estimate, and so, and we had several companies that contacted us for this packet. So in reviewing why we didn't get any bids, Tony, Tuzia, had spoken to a company that said they, they do work with districts or companies that to help maybe write a more clearly written RFP. So that might be a learning curve on my part, but we did have an opportunity for companies to come in towards the building, and we didn't have any that came and know this. So I would like to kind of revisit that with this company and see if there's a way that we might be able to clarify the bid. We did have some inquiries that asked if we'd be considering using badges at door, interior doors too, and so I said that that was
They wanted to increase the scope of the, it wasn't a big enough project for that.
I don't know. I, I'm not really sure, and I, I'm not sure why we didn't even just get the original company to bid, because we didn't necessarily achieve any specs that we were looking for. But so clearly, I wanna go back to the table, but I wanted to bring that forward. Again, this is several improvement money, or his money, that, that we could spend, and I believe that we should, because of the, the safety.
This was, this was kind of spearheaded by the emergency management, so that, in that sense, I think it's, it's still something that we still base on, from that perspective, that it wasn't just a great project that we had accomplished.
Did Tony call the people who you expected to bid and ask them why they didn't bid?
Tony did not, and I did not. I had actually spoken to the person who shared that with us. I did not follow up. I wanted to kind of remain clean with the process until they go back out. I certainly can call. The only, the only guess I had was that potentially that person thought their original estimate or quote would be used as, as that, as their bid, but that certainly wasn't how it's written on our P E. So we certainly will follow up with that vendor, and we have the names and addresses of all the vendors. So I can clearly follow up with each of the vendors or the latter, explaining that we've opened a, created a new bid, and we have to address questions.
Is the, how is the RFP released? Is it sent to those vendors, or do you email the RFP?
It's a posting, so it's, it's, so no.
So I do learn things a lot, I think. And if you email them directly and say, this is an RFP, we're planning to do the bid, I think you tend to get a better response. So if you have email addresses for all the vendors, you need to email to them directly.
Is, is the, my question is, would it be connected, because I don't know any of the process? Does that, is that prohibitive? This depends on the family of your email address, the county new address, so you're going
You're choosing.
So you're, I, I, so I don't know how, because it's, it's town money?
Well, there's a number of people, I mean
If, if there's a difference
I don't know the question about that town, the town money thing, but we posted it one time, and, and we can still post it the same way, but I think we still invite people to, you know, to bid, to respond to the RFP, at least that's how it works, who might have listened to this, so.
And
There's nothing, I'm, I usually tell them, you're contacting people to make them aware of the problem. Yes.
I, I just didn't know how that process
It's, it's more like, here, I'm gonna put out here is where people come, as opposed to pushing in front of their face, you know, and saying, this is, this is available.
And we did get some of these from other states and
Right.
across the state, so I think that, I, I do think that we'll, we'll be successful, but it might just be a, a big work.
All right, we already mentioned that we were maybe at the book fair. Appreciate that. Any other things that we forgot to mention, or else have anything to discuss?
What about the, I didn't know I asked this last time, I don't remember what the answer was. What about the RFP for the food program?
Yeah, I would need Because it had to be part of the contract that they had to allow to
Well, we were putting out for bid the food, the food service contract.
You can't put out, you think the, the way the language was written at the time when we were discussing it, that the thirteen oh three contract didn't have language saying that you could put even a bid to invite the possibility of, of getting a vendor in. Like, the way their contract was written, we couldn't even put out a request quote.
So that was a change in the new bid contract. Allows us to do that.
Yeah, so, so
But that's always added to the contract.
So
So what does that, what does that mean then, in terms of having a vendor?
We could do that. We, we, we could put out a RFP or a class quote.
No, I mean, we're about, we're about to this year, though. We just need the same vendor, oh, okay.
We could do that, so the board has not made the decision to We could do that, so the board has not made the decision to go ahead and move forward with that kind of request for information, or we could do an information or an actual proposal. So if that's something the board wants to do, we probably should, you know, spend some time talking about what we would want in that. It might be an item that we.
Didn't the state one come out yet? Was that, what are we looking for something from the state too? Like not only the 1303 contract language, but also wasn't there something from the state? Can we put that on the agenda for September, as far as an actual discussion? Other information that we need to add, if there's research information, things of that nature? Now that the, the language is, is in the 1303 contract, that we're allowed to put out a, a class quote. And if there's anything from the state that we would have to follow.
When was the vendor we used currently?
We don't, we already, it's all on us.
It's just all on us.
So that's why we had to wait until that language got into their new contract, like you can explore it, because they're actually our.
And most of the time, even if you have an outside service, they still employ the same people, but they are across, and they work for this.
Just the, in the current enrollment is as of, you know, how? As of Friday, there was a correction version added in the back here, I believe. Is that this one with 531, 341, and then 403? This is the most recent one, and that was Friday, didn't you say?
Yes. And, you know, we, we had, we have students at the end every day, and so I don't think we're going to leave, but we are having students added every day. I, I did present this in a little different format for you, for a couple of reasons. One is so that you can see what the class sizes look like. And, you know, it's just a straightforward formula system, and also the average class size is listed on the top. So if we end up in a situation where we're talking about making progressions and changing class sizes, you would at least have a sense of what the class sizes look like and where we might start that conversation.
I think it's interesting to see the, the differences also in some of the years, as far as just like the total number of, you know, one year, there's a 25 difference.
So darn twins in that.
But just, I mean, just interesting, like in, in the sense of if, if we did have to do shuffling at some point in time, you know, looking at, you know, older classes would be, I would think, where we would want to do more of the shuffling, because they don't need as much one-on-one attention, but it's just one of the bigger class sizes, so it's, it's a little bit interesting. Something to get to, so.
And certainly there could be more data collected on the middle school. I just had told them there was students in the seventh and eighth grade.
They changed paths.
Well, we've always talked about the fact that you can't really eliminate a teacher, because there's subject.
Yeah, they're not.
Not that we want to talk about it, but.
No, no.
Regardless of whether there's 86 or 68 keys in the grounds.
Any other public comment?
AJ Karaway, it was just about the keys. So I was at the meeting when the keys first came up as a concern for the home, from home and. And then it seemed, or it appeared that the administrators felt that that was a very, a very serious concern rather than just a security concern, and which I totally understand. If there was no reply to the RFP, and so it's going to take longer, a suggestion that came out of that was simply color coding the locks and keys for the administrators, it sounds like they had more keys. Is something happening in order to address the safety between now and when that work is done?
Nope, thank you for sharing that.
So just color coding the keys, double those, simple thing. And then the other thing was, there was a very, very informal composting idea that had come up to the town at the beginning of summer, I believe. Did that grow any legs, is that going anywhere? Because I thought you had earmarked the school as the, as like a test, they didn't approach anybody?
You need that?
Interesting.
Like having a compost location? Where residents could bring?
No, just how much, how much waste from lunch. That's it, it was just a test.
School lunch.
Yeah, it said that, you know, it's a great test for it, I'm like, that's a great test for it. You eat an apple and throw the rest away.
If you run into this person and, I would recommend that they.
Keep listening to them, yeah.
That would be great, I mean, that would be good, like contain the spring planting, you know, where we do the spring planting event before Mother's Day.
There's a whole education thing around it.
Well, I would, I would say that if, if that's something that, that individual person that they need to personally expose, we can discuss it.
Any other public comment? All righty.
18, 18, motion to adjourn.
What do you think, you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll sit.
All in favor? Aye, very good. Good evening, folks. Did you bring the spare schedule? Because I now have a football game on Sunday morning, so that is my hour. Oh, are you?